Ah, there's the email. Um, if I could find it. I'm looking for it right now, so that's. My gosh, I can't find anything right now.
Nicole, what's the most updated agenda from what date?
I'm not sure if I have any.
Yeah. So just the one from.
Oh, you're going in through there.
Well, I can go back through the city.
Um, yeah, there should only be one.
Okay.
But I don't see that attached to one other.
Let me just go back through the city of site then. Or there's one printed, right?
Do you have the, um?
She heard me. Oh.
I don't know, I didn't have my computer from the last time.
Well, here's a printout.
Okay, perfect.
Thank you. There, I'm off, I'm off the hook. I'm off the hook.
Welcome, Vice Mayor, council members, and staff and public. I call this regular meeting of the Albany City Council for January 17th, 2023, to order, and wish everyone a Happy New Year as this is our first meeting of the year. I would like to ask Councilmember Jordan to please read the land acknowledgement.
Thank you, Mayor. The City of Albany. There we go. The City of Albany recognizes that we occupy the land originally protected by the Confederate villages of Le Shon. We acknowledge the genocide that took place on these lands and must make strides to repay the moral debt that is owed to this indigenous people, specifically the Aloneye tribe. We thank them for their contributions, which have transformed our community and will continue to bring forth growth and unity. The City of Albany commits to sustaining ongoing relationships with the tribe and together build a better future for all that now make this their home.
Thank you, and we will do a roll call in a second, but before we start, I just want to call attention to the fact that we have two council members attending via Zoom due to either illness or city-related travel, so they will be online. City Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Hanson Romero?
Here.
Councilmember Jordan?
Here now.
Councilmember Lopez?
And he cannot speak, he has completely lost his voice, so I'll be reading comments from him tonight, and he did hold up a thumbs up.
Vice Mayor Mickey?
Here.
Mayor Teedman?
Here.
We now move on to our third item, which is our AB 361 findings. Staff, can we have a brief report if there's any needed?
Sure, Mayor, just a continuation of AB 361. While it remains in effect, the council is required to re-adopt this item on a continual basis.
Thank you. Is there any discussion from council? Or public comment? Seeing none, I will look for a motion in a second.
I will move approval.
I'll second.
There's a motion in a second. Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Mayor Teedman?
Yes.
Councilmember Hanson Romero?
Yes.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Councilmember Lopez? Vice Mayor Teedman?
Nope.
I'm sorry. Force of habit. Vice Mayor Mickey?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. That brings us to ceremonial matters, and I will read a proclamation on behalf of the city and invite Lucy Chen to accept this proclamation on behalf of the Albany Asian Pacific Islander Parent Engagement Group. If you'd like to approach, I'll meet you over there.
I'll read and then make comments after.
City of Albany proclamation in recognition of Lunar New Year, January 22nd, 2023. Whereas the Lunar New Year begins on January 22nd, 2023, and whereas this is the year of the rabbit, celebrated by most of Asian Pacific communities, those born in the year of the rabbit are said to exhibit the values of being kind and patient, alert and quick, attentive to detail and skillful, very responsible, and always treat others with respect. And whereas while most Asian Pacific communities celebrate the year of the rabbit, Vietnam celebrates the year of the cat, those born in the year of the cat are said to have personality traits such as good judgment, talent, ambition, and creativeness. And whereas the Lunar New Year marks the first new moon of the lunar solar calendars traditional to many Asian countries, which are regulated by the cycles of the moon and sun. And whereas the origin of the Lunar New Year, also known as Spring Festival, dates back centuries and was once a time to honor deities and ancestors with celebrations that can last for 15 days until the full moon. And whereas today, the celebration is observed by many Asian Pacific communities across the world, with family gathering dinners, decorations, firecrackers, the traditional lion dance, and prayers. And whereas Asian Pacific American communities continue to be an integral part of Albany, contributing significantly to all aspects of daily life. And whereas the City of Albany continues our support of the Slano Avenue Association's Lunar New Year celebration. And whereas the City of Albany would like to acknowledge and recognize the Albany Asian Pacific Islander Parent Engagement Group for their ongoing work to support, promote, and celebrate the interests of Asian Pacific Islander students and families in Albany. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed, the City Council sends greetings and wishes for good fortune in the Lunar New Year to our Asian American friends as you celebrate the Lunar New Year. Xin Nian Kuai Le and Gong He Fat Choy.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yeah, just a few appreciation sentences. It is really my honor to be here to receive the proclamation of Lunar New Year from City of Albany. I feel so happy, so excited, and so proud. It really means a lot. So on behalf of Asian American community in City of Albany and Parent Engagement Group, I just want to really show appreciation. Thank you so much. It really means we work together, we stand in unity to against any type of discrimination or exclusion. We welcome inclusion and diversity. It means that we are in unity, and we cannot stand any form of discrimination. So really send the strong signal to everyone, and this is the beautiful, beautiful day, a wonderful proclamation. It means significantly to our entire city and area. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Oh, by the way, you are all welcome to participate in our Lunar New Year celebration on February the 5th in Oceanview. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Are there any comments from council?
I'll comment as a geologist that I far prefer Lunar New Year to the Julian New Year, because the Julian New Year is just some arbitrary point in space as opposed to an astronomical New Year, so I look forward to the event. Thanks.
Any of our council members online? I'll just say, thank you for receiving our proclamation, Happy New Year, and I wanted to appreciate staff for taking on keeping track of proclamations like this so that they are better tracked than they previously were. It's much appreciated. Is there any public comment? Okay. That brings us to the city manager's report. City Manager, may the council please have your report.
Thank you, Mayor. It's like my mic stays on by itself. While today it is not storming outside, we've certainly all had our fair share of storms recently, and I'd like to take a moment to recognize both our community for their vigilance during these multiple storm events and the uncertainty that occurred during periods of heavy rain and other exciting times, and thunder and lightning and everything that went on, as well as our city staff for realizing the urgency of the situation and responding accordingly. It was really a shared cross-departmental solution and response to the issues that we were experiencing day in and day out throughout the recent storms and likely those to come. We did open our emergency operations center for a period of time. We distributed a significant amount of sand. The fire department provided over 2,000 sandbags during this past period, which is over 25 cubic yards of sand, approximately 35 tons. Our public works department was everywhere during these storms, responding to minor flooding, some tree issues, and just storm-related issues throughout. And also to our residents for doing their part in helping us keep the storm drains as clear as possible. We weren't able to do it all ourselves, certainly as the city, and also to our SRT volunteers for helping with that initiative. I wanted to start my report with recognizing, our deputy city clerk is here this evening, John Klaus, who is sitting in for our city clerk and Sue. So, John, thank you for spending your evening with us and for your help with the screen. The Cane's Adam Bike Way Pilot Project installation is underway. This is an installation of a two-way bike way on Adams Street between Clay and Buchanan and on Cane's Avenue between Brighton and Marin. It's starting this week and continuing through January 31st. This project was approved by the council in 2019, so we're excited to see this forward motion. More information can be found on our website, shown here, albanyca.org/CanesAdamsPilot. As a reminder, we have a new reduced speed limit on Slano. This is to help slow everything down in this busy business activity district. The speed limit has effectively been reduced from 25 to 20 miles per hour and really just focused on roadway safety for all users. This initiative was adopted by the city council previously. A reminder, if you're interested in getting more engaged in local government, to please apply for advisory body vacancies. We still have vacancies open. You'll see that they are currently actively being appointed by our council members, as shown on our consent calendar this evening. However, we still do have vacancies. There will be a training for all advisory body members appointed for late February or beginning of March, so please submit your application now. We have more than a handful of different opportunities in the many different divisions of the city. Our Recreation and Community Services Department is actively transitioning to a more wide array of opportunities now that, we hope, the major issues that affected our operations with the COVID pandemic are settling down to some degree. This includes facility rentals for private parties and other events, as well as a vast array of recreation programming and classes for all ages and interests, and I underscore all ages and interests. You can see all of this information on our website, Parks and Facility Rental, also by calling our Recreation and Community Services Department directly. And the Activity Guide is also posted on our website and available both at our community center and here in our front lobby, also mailed citywide, which houses all of the upcoming classes and programs. Albany Cares is hosting a homeownership preservation workshop coming up on Saturday, January 28th, from 10:00 to 11:30 at the community center. Learn how to avoid foreclosure and find out about other legal rights as a homeowner. For more information, you can call our phone line at 524-9283. Also, information here is posted, and no RSVP is needed for attending the workshop. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager. If anyone attending would like to ask a question about or comment on the city manager's report, please raise your hand. You will have one minute. If you are on the phone, please raise your hand by pressing star nine. Note, this is for questions and comments on the city manager's report only. If you have comments on matters not on the agenda, the time for those is next. In this and all comments and questions during the meeting, please address the council, not other attendees, and respect each person that has spoken. The council wants everyone to feel comfortable speaking and not be intimidated by others' comments or reactions.
David Danby, please go ahead.
Hey, this is not David Danby, but.
One-minute clock, please.
I'll wait till it starts. Won't wait till it starts. I just wanted to comment on the homeownership presentation workshop. I was wondering if it was, if the city had considered doing a renters' workshop also for the people, and since more, there are more renters than homeowners in Albany. And maybe that's happened in the past and I didn't notice, but I just wanted to ask about that. Thanks.
City Manager, if you can briefly respond?
Sure. Thank you for the idea, and yes, we have had outreach in the past to our renters' community, including our rent review program, several workshops around that area of renting, but certainly looking forward to other opportunities, so we'll take that under advisement.
Thank you. Any questions from council?
I just wanted to add my thanks to staff for weathering the storm. I was walking around and didn't see a lot of chaos, obviously a little chaos, which is pretty impressive, because I just read in the paper today that this is the second most intense sequence of events since 1862. So the fact that there wasn't more chaos out there, I think, is a real testament to the city. I also want to thank SRT, because as I walked around, I thought, gee, I wonder if SRT would be interested in helping out, and of course, they already were, so thank you, SRT.
Yes, I'll echo that. I was expecting a deluge of emails to the council about various storm-related things, and the fact that we did not receive them speaks well of staff's response. Any from online? Okay. Moving on to Good of the City. This is for attendees to provide the council comments, information, and questions on an item that is not on the agenda. Please raise your hands now on Zoom, and by phone again is star nine. By state law, known as the Brown Act, the council cannot discuss items that are not on the agenda except under extraordinary circumstances. Rather, items may be referred to future agenda or to staff for comment.
Ms. Conrad?
Hi, thank you very much, City Council. I'd like to refer to the call to order land acknowledgement, that there is one particular business in Albany that I've spoken of before that occupies this land that was originally protected by the Confederate villages of Liz John, and that's Golden Gate Fields Racetrack gambling facility. They occupy 140 acres of prime bayfront property that could be better used for the benefit of our community. Our children are underserved. I could think of many better uses, and I'm sure that put together, we could all figure out something better for that land. And, as the land acknowledgement says, to build a better future for all that now make this their home. So I'd like to ask that we can put our heads together and figure something else out, if possible, to replace that massive amount of property. And first and foremost, the very existence of Golden Gate Fields violates California Penal Code 597B. As stated, every person who overdrives, overloads, drives when overloaded, overworks, tortures, torments, deprives of necessary sustenance, drink or shelter, cruelly beats, mutilates, or cruelly kills any animal or causes or procures any animal to be so overdriven, overloaded, et cetera, and the above mentioned, either as an owner or otherwise, subjects any animal to needless suffering, or inflicts unnecessary cruelty upon the animal, or in any manner abuses any animal or fails to provide the animal with food, drink, shelter, protection from weather, or who drives, rides, or otherwise uses the animal when unfit for labor, is, for each offense, guilty of a crime punishable pursuant to subdivision D. And Golden Gate Fields violates several parts of this penal code, and for that reason, I believe it shouldn't exist in our community. Thank you.
Sorry. Could you provide that reference again, the number?
Yes. It's California Penal Code number 597, Section B. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Ms. Shambaya?
Good evening and Happy New Year to you all. I again want to talk about horse racing, not just at the Golden Gate Fields, but in general, and how it's not amenable to reform. And to make my point, I'm using one, only one reason, and that is the use of legal drugs, not illegal drugs, but use of legal drugs. And people who want to reform their racehorse racing, they really focus on illegal substances or excessive use of legal ones. And when CHRB, which is in charge of the horse racing in the state of California, pass so-called humane regulations, they pat themselves on the shoulder and pretend the welfare of horses is on the top of their priorities list. What is intentionally ignored is the harms, the industry's use of permitted procedures, and amounts of legal drugs due to horses. The question we need to ask is, if racing comes natural to horses, why does the industry need to medically intervene in the daily lives of the racing horses? And what does violating the natural functioning of the horses' bodies do to them? There are at least three types of intervention medically that I would like to briefly speak to. To minimize doping, which is a good thing to do, CHRB requires regular blood and urine testing, which involves a lot of poking and can be very painful, because it happens regularly, not once in a while, it's regular. Taking x-rays are encouraged, again, a good thing, to detect fractures and stop trainers and jockeys from racing the injured horses. But the procedure is very hard to perform on horses, as you know, it's very stressful for them too, you know, given that they have such a large body. And we know why these fractures happen, of course, because a lot of horses are not mature enough anatomically to be able to endure racing. And even others, because they have to race day in and day out, they injure their horses. It's done? Sorry. Okay, can I have just one second or one minute? Not one minute, half a minute for one thing.
I'm sorry, no, thank you for your comment.
No, sorry.
Clay Larson? David Danby?
Hi, it's Julie Winkstein again. I just have a few things. First of all, I hadn't planned on speaking about the horses at Golden Gate Field. I so appreciate the people who come to the meetings and talk about them, and I hope that you will consider what it is you can do. I know there are things you can't do, but I hope that you will listen and take to heart what they've been telling you for a long time. I really, really appreciate their work on that. I wanted to mention that, as usual, the notification to the city, to the community members is, seems to be primarily about anything that's happening in Albany, seems to be, continues to be primarily email and the website. And now that there's no longer CMAC, and one of the charges of CMAC was to communicate better with the community, I'd like to know what the city is going to do about that, because it's just not happening. There are a lot of people who aren't here tonight or who haven't applied for commissions because they just don't know, and you're not doing a very good job of getting people who aren't online. I also wanted to say, nice job to Councilmember Jordan for his pronunciation of Le Shon tonight. Thank you so much for getting that right. And I also, let's see, oh, and I wanted to comment on the anti-homeless sign at the community center on the side of the library that says no parking at night. Used to be a safe space for people who lived in their cars could park there, and now there's a sign there that's very hostile and purposefully hostile, and I would like to see it removed. I don't understand why that sign should be there and why, see, Albany should present itself as an anti-homeless and criminalize actually homelessness in Albany. homelessness in Albany. And then finally, I should have said this after the city manager's report, but I didn't think of doing it then. But I just want, I wrote to the Public Works, but there's a, during the storms, Washington, the north side of Washington, between Masonic and San Pablo flooded. And it flooded because there are no drains between Masonic and, until Cane's, the south side, sorry, not the, the south side of Washington, not the north side, but the south side. And all of the streets feed into this huge river of water that is going down Washington. So I'm wondering, I know there was work there done there in the last year, and I'm wondering if this was an accident, the drains were removed, or is it on purpose? Because if it's on purpose, it's a weird choice to make because all the side streets feed into Washington, and then there's this water flowing down Washington. So it becomes that you can't cross the street. You can't, it's very difficult to get onto the sidewalk on those corners. And so it's really not walkable during storms. And I'm just wondering if it was a mistake or if it was on purpose, what reasoning went into that, that it would purposely flood one side of the street so that neighbors, people that live in the area can't really have trouble getting to their house, you get having trouble crossing the street. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Hi, can you hear me now?
Please go ahead.
Hi, I have two issues to comment on. I have to deal with a three-minute time limit which the city is so enamored with. First, I wanted to comment on the recent city council election, which was conducted for the first time using ranked choice voting. I analyzed the raw data results provided by Elanade County. In my email, I provided data which included votes received by each candidate in each of the five ranks. I combined the vote totals for ranks one and two. I feel that provides a reasonable estimate of the vote totals that would have been obtained in a normal two-winner election where each voter has two votes. In other words, the way Albany used to conduct elections. The rank one and two totals show the same order of finish as the ranked choice voting votes. I think this suggests that the ranked choice electoral system had no impact on the results. However, looking at all this, I found troubling, I found troubling that the information provided by the city for Measure BB, in some cases, was inaccurate or incomplete. There are problems with the description of ranked choice voting in the municipal code. The impartial analysis presented the voter was incompetent, and the ballot measure question was poorly stated. Problems here, I think, call into question the validity of the 2020 Measure BB election. The city should analyze the real impact of ranked choice voting. The city should certainly ignore the claims made by proponents of ranked choice voting, namely that a given election resulted in a more diverse group of winning candidates. These simple-minded comparisons confuse correlation and causation that are actually worthless. I also wanted to comment on the startup of the installation of the Cane's Adam Bikeways, which the city manager reported on. The project will create new traffic flow patterns permitting two-way vehicle traffic within each block. The city sent residents on the affected blocks an informational flyer describing the new traffic patterns. The flyer did not describe parking requirements under the new configuration. In the past, the city's official position has been that the vehicle requirements for parking on a two-way street will be enforced in Cane's and Adams. Staff noted here that the wrong-way parking is inherently dangerous. However, also in the past, some city council members have suggested that the city could violate state law here. This may have created some confusion. So several weeks ago, I sent an email to the city manager and the police department asking for a clarification of parking requirements and how they will be enforced. I have not received any response from the city manager or from the police department. So I'm repeating my quest for this clarification. I'm including the city council and asking some city council member to direct my question to city staff. All right, that's it. Thanks.
Thank you for your comment. Brian Martin?
Yeah, I live on the 600 block of Adams Street, and wanted to thank the city for finally getting things off the ground as we see work happening on the Adams-Cane's Bike Boulevard. And my understanding is it was planned decades ago and is finally being implemented now. It was originally envisioned as a regional solution for non-car transportation, one of many needed solutions. Those needs still exist, but now this infrastructure that supports travel without cars is needed more than ever for residents of my block as we anticipate hundreds of new neighbors at the bowling alley project any day now with nowhere to park. And we see electric scooters and e-bikes on the sidewalks and appreciate the city's support for them and for other modes of transportation to safely use our city streets. And I would like to thank the city for updating the city website recently to explain what the project is and how parking direction will be handled. It may not be the level of detail that everyone is happy with, but it very much meets my needs for understanding how the parking will work. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Hi there, and a Happy New Year, and congratulations to the new city council members. I've lived on the 900 block of Cane's Avenue for more than 30 years. We're waiting for these Cane's and Adams Bicycle Boulevards and traffic calming projects for more than a decade so people can safely and legally ride parallel to San Pablo in both directions, and car traffic will be slowed down. I was excited to get that tag on my door, that signing and striping will be starting this week. Albany has a couple of bike routes, but literally no bike boulevards until these are put in. The two-way internal car traffic will create visual friction, so cars will no longer be able to speed unimpeded in our neighborhoods. A previous speaker speculated about perceived problems of contra-flow car parking. I will reiterate what the Transportation Commission and city council, which have discussed this extensively over the past years, understands, and many of you probably know from having biked on bicycle boulevards in Berkeley and elsewhere. Bike boulevards with this type of treatment have been in Berkeley, Oakland, and elsewhere for more than 50 years. Nearby examples that you've probably ridden on include Ninth Street, Millvia, and Russell. On all those streets and more, you can bike or drive and see many cars park with their left wheels alongside the curb, if that's the way they've entered the block, rather than forcing people to make U's and three-point turns. I'd be happy to send you guys photos of such parking I've taken over the years. It's been working absolutely fine the way it's been for decades. You all know Fareed Javindel. He's Albany's current Transportation Commissioner, former city council member and mayor. He's also Berkeley's Transportation Manager and an expert on transportation, bicycle boulevards, and very specifically Berkeley Bicycle Boulevards. I'll quote Commissioner Javindel from a past Transportation Commission meeting discussion on contra-flow parking on bicycle boulevards such as Cane's and Adams. He said, quote, "Well, I can say that as far as complaints about safety issues and operational issues with the contra-flow or left-side parking on these types of streets in Berkeley, I've heard none. Honestly, I hear complaints about all kinds of stuff. So the fact that there hasn't been, that, I'm sorry, that I haven't heard any about this kind of leads me to think it's working. In terms of the function of these roads in Berkeley, there really hasn't been any problem brought to my attention. So I think that's definitely something I feel comfortable with based on that experience." End quote. Now, this is me again speaking. It's 100% clear that this treatment with contra-flow parking functions absolutely fine and safely for all users. There's never been any problem. Contra-flow car parking on these types of streets has been and will be perfectly safe. I really look forward to slower car traffic and safer bicycling on these streets soon. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. Jeremiah?
Yeah, good evening, City Council. It's Jeremiah Garipenguelo here. A couple of things. So I would just like to mention that the new speed, reduced speed limit on Solano Avenue is, you know, as we know, 20 miles per hour. I was wondering if anybody from city staff has reached out and at least made a simple phone call to AC Transit to let them know that there's been a speed reduction on Solano Avenue, and politely asked AC Transit to adjust their schedule accordingly. I've mentioned this at Transportation Commission meetings. I just don't know what to do. So I'm politely asking city council possibly to advise city staff to look into it, to make a simple phone call, shout to AC Transit, and notify them of the speed reduction. Yep, that way they can change their schedule. Because as far as I know, the bus drivers think it's still 25, so their schedule reflects 25 miles per hour. Hello?
We can hear you.
Okay. Sorry, my phone said unmute. So yeah, so basically, I was just hoping that someone could call AC Transit and just organize that if it hasn't been organized yet. I know we did a lot of work to get that speed reduction in place. And so, you know, notifying AC Transit would be, you know, on everybody's behalf, would be great. Also, I just want to mention a friend of mine from Albany High School passed away yesterday, Christopher Castle. He was a couple of grades younger than me. His father, Harold Hallowcastle, is probably struggling right now. But I'm just, I'm just wondering if, I've done a lot of work recently, the past few months since my birthday, August 30th. I've got One Pill Can Kill campaign. I went to the fentanyl awareness summit at the Sheriff's Training Center. And I've got the entire school district of Albany, all the teachers certified in fentanyl training, and every teacher and staff has access to the Narcan kit. I'm at the school district. That's one thing I spearheaded for the school district. I'm really proud of that. I was wondering if it could be possible Albany staff could be trained as well with fentanyl and Narcan trained. So all city staff would have Narcan on the scene, such as the Recreation Department and City Hall. Please look into it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Do you have any more? No more comments. Thank you. With that, we turn to the consent calendar.
Actually, if I could make a quick comment.
Go for it.
Regarding proportional ranked choice voting, which Albany used for the last time, not having an impact, and lack of cause and effect, I can say it certainly did have an effect because now Councilmember Lopez came to me last spring expressing an interest in running for office. Former Mayor Pilch came to me shortly after expressing an interest in running. And given my perception of the similarity, although not exact equivalence of many of their policy positions under the old system, I would have stopped with that in terms of not looking to recruit additional candidates, because otherwise the vote would have been split and potentially caused them all to lose. But because of proportional ranked choice voting, I did continue looking for candidates. And one of the people I eventually asked to run was now Councilmember John Micky. And, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor John Micky. Thank you, Mayor. And he took up the challenge pretty much on the spot, to his credit. And so all three of them were able to run. And Councilmember Micky turned out to be the most preferred by the electorate. So there's direct cause and effect that if we had had plurality at large, I can certainly testify, we would not have had the same election that we had.
Thank you. That brings us to the consent calendar. Items on the consent calendar are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. By approval of the consent calendar, the staff recommendations will be adopted unless otherwise modified by the city council. And there will be no separate discussion on these items unless a council member or a member of the audience requests discussion of one of those items. Does any council member wish to discuss an item separately or pull it from consent?
78, please.
I have 78. There are two members online. Seeing none. Councilmember Hanson Romero?
Sorry, I'm looking for if this was, no, this was under a new business. Sorry.
Are there any members of the public who would like to speak on a specific item on the consent calendar? There's one online. Two. And please state the item that you would like to pull. Jeremiah?
Yeah, I stated 77, please.
Thank you. And do we have another member of the public? We'll come back for comments on each of these items.
Yes, I'd like to pull 76.
Are there any other members of the public? That's it. Okay. Then the first, we will go to discussion of item 76, Advisory Body Appointments for Council Ratification. And if the member of the public who wished to speak on this would be brought up and be allowed to make their comment for one minute.
I'd like to, I would, I object, I appreciate Peggy McQuaid's service to the city, and I can understand her wanting to continue to be involved. But I would like to ask that you do not, do not, whatever's the word, ratify her appointment to the Policing Commission. Peggy McQuaid has a long history with the police department. I think the person who is, gets the position should be nonpartisan. I also think it should be a person of color. I think she could preference to somebody who's a black, indigenous, or person of color. I think because they're more impacted by the actions of the police. I think the city council should reach out to parent groups, the village, whatever it would take to get more people applying, if that's your issue. We need somebody who can bring a fresh take, a fresh look. And I think it's just too important, this Policing Commission, to keep having the same voices over and over. I hope that you will listen to me and really consider what I'm saying and not just dismiss it and be glad that I'm done talking. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Is there any other public comment or anyone on council who would like to speak to this? Seeing none. We will go to item 77, which is Amendments to the Salary Schedule for Various Hourly Employee Classifications to Comply with California State Minimum Wage Increase. And I believe this was also a member of the public. Bring them up to speak for one minute.
Thank you. Good evening, City Councilors. Jeremiah here once again. Yeah, I was wondering if you could possibly say, city staff might be able to mention, what is the new state minimum wage? Is it, you know, $17 or $18? You know, that's really great and everything, but, you know, Albany has its own living wage, which is different than the state minimum wage. So are we forgetting that Albany has its own Albany living wage? And now we're going to the state minimum wage and transferring a whole new pay schedule? I'm just kind of confused what's going on there. And also, just some more explanation on, you know, what's the difference between Albany living wage and state minimum wage? So I hope that Albany still has its own living wage, and we should seek to increase that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Are there any other members of the public wishing to speak on this item? No more comments. And I'll clarify that, looking at the staff report, the new minimum wage set by the state appears to be $15.50 per hour. I don't know if staff has any more detail on the other questions that were asked.
The other question is a ordinance that is in our municipal code, and it is specific to contract service providers, not employees.
And do you happen to know off the top of your head, I think there was also a question of what is our city minimum wage? Is that what you're referring to?
No, the question was the living wage ordinance. And the living wage ordinance is applicable to contracts for services. Our minimum wage is, as you stated, expressed in the staff report.
Thank you very much. Are there any council members with other questions or comments on this item? Seeing none. We will move to item 78, A Request for an Encroachment Permit for a Temporary Street Closure for the Albany Move and Groove Event on April 23rd. Closure for the Albany Move and Groove Event on April 23rd. I believe this is Councilmember Jordan.
Thank you. Yes, I would like to add a requirement or propose adding a requirement that expanded bike parking be made available for this event, which seems appropriate given its nature, and that this bike parking be placed in a visible location. The event did provide expanded bike parking last year, however, it was tucked in essentially behind or within an alcove of Albany High School buildings, such that it wasn't visible to most people arriving. Yeah, so that's, that's what I would like to add to this item.
And to check in with staff, is that a thing that we can easily do from the dais?
Sure, we can modify the encroachment permit to include that condition of approval.
Excellent. Does that require amending the resolution before us, or can we do that as staff direction?
Staff direction is perfectly ample if this council's comfortable with that.
Councilmember Jordan, seeing a thumbs up.
Quite comfortable.
Thank you. With that, I believe that's all the items we had to address on the consent agenda. So unless anyone would like to pull an item to vote on separately, I would ask for a motion and a second.
I will move the consent calendar with the modification to the encroachment permit as just discussed.
And I will second. Motion is moved and seconded. City Clerk, can we please call the roll?
Councilmember Lopez? Councilmember Lopez votes yea. Vice Mayor Mickey?
Yes.
Mayor Tiedemann?
Yes.
Councilmember Hanson Romero?
Yes.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes, thank you.
Motion carries.
Thank you. That brings us to a public hearing, 9-1, Amendments to Chapter 11 of the Fire Protection and Chapter 12 of the Building and Housing Municipal Code. Could we please have a presentation from staff?
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Jeff Bond, the Community Development Director. I'm joined this evening by Chief Boydo. If we could bring up my PowerPoint presentation, that would be great. As that's coming up. Terrific, thank you. I'd like to give a relatively brief presentation, but go into a little bit of background that, beyond, a little bit beyond the scope of this particular code adoption, just to give some context to the council, since this is new to some of you. Our building and fire codes are in place to regulate construction and alteration of buildings. So what we'll be talking about this, this evening is new construction or repair, additions or renovations to structures, not building maintenance, which is not covered by our codes. So to begin with, our codes are, we have a state mandate to enforce what's called the California Building Standards Code. It incorporates 12 different volumes. I brought, just for show and tell effect, this is the California Building Code. There are other sections. The fire code is, is an important part of it. There's a plumbing code, a mechanical code, an electrical code, a green building code, a residential code that is going to consolidate some of this material for, for single family and, and two-unit homes, and I'm probably forgetting a couple. But it's a substantial, it's a total of about 10 binders of something about that scale. These, these codes are developed by nonprofit national organizations, primarily the International Code Council. There are also nonprofit organizations related to the fire service that also contribute to that. These national codes are modified by the state. Various state agencies have a significant amount of input into that. They create what's called the California Building Code, which is maybe 5% or 10% of the codebook is modified by the state, which then are mandated for us to adopt. We are allowed to make our own amendments if they are at least equivalent to or more restrictive than the state, and if we can make findings that we have specific local, climatic, geological, or topographical conditions that justify the change. These codes go through three-year cycles, so the national agencies are already starting to work on the, the new codes that we're adopting this evening. They come to the state, the state works on it for about a year and a half, and then they are published. In this case, these, these codes were published and sent to us probably in August or September of, of last year, something in that timeframe. The, the action that we're required, they take effect automatically beginning January 1st. So the action that you're taking this evening is not really the adoption of them, but to adopt local amendments. I'd like to give you a little bit of, next slide, please. A little bit of context for how we use these codes. First of all, we basically have a two-step process. If somebody wants to build something in Albany, there's a planning review, the Planning and Zoning Commission looks at the more significant projects. At the staff level, we look at the less significant projects or the projects that we're not allowed to bring to the planning commission in some cases these days due to legislative changes. Once the planning process is completed, project is approved by the commission, or, as I mentioned, smaller projects by staff, it goes through this building code compliance phase. It starts with planning a building application to the Community Development Department. Either we're strongly encouraging people just to email them in or call us, but can certainly come to the front counter as well. The first major step is what we call plan check, which is accepting the plans. We review them for compliance with the codebooks. That usually goes around a couple of times, so we'll get the plans, we'll make some comments, revised plans will come in. Sometimes we have to do that again, depending on the complexity of the project and the experience of the applicant. We then issue the permit, and then as the project is under construction, we do inspections. And when I say "we," it's both Community Development Department and the Fire Department. Next slide, please. In terms of the, the plan check process, it is a collaborative process. We're the point of contact generally for members of the public, although we quickly kind of distribute it to other departments, and as technical questions come up, we make sure that the applicant is talking directly to the subject matter expert. In some cases, they're city staff. But due to the complexity of these codes, we also rely on consultants. Our department uses a consulting firm, Philip Seberg &amp; Associates, who are experts in codes. And the Fire Department uses a firm called CSG. Public Works Department also will contract out for certain types of engineering reviews. The, next slide, please. So I touched briefly on the changes in the state code. These are the mandated changes that we're accepting. And to kind of cut to the chase, there's nothing major here this year. There are, the most significant changes continue to be in energy codes, and, and they're good changes. They're adopting statewide many of the, the changes that we've adopted either in Albany or in other more progressive communities about trying to use electrical appliances and trying to use, introduce energy efficiency and green building practices and so forth. So those continue to be incorporated into statewide codes, which is terrific. It is, in a way, exactly what we all wanted to see happen, you know, five, 10, 15 years ago, is to see this scale up to a statewide accomplishment. There are some, some relatively minor changes in the state codes. I don't think anything that is going to significantly change projects in Albany, but there are little things. As an example, one where we're now going to be requiring surge protectors in electric panels. And so that's something that's a little different and a little bit new. Not a big deal, although I think there's a little bit of a run on them right now at the, at the supply shops, but that's the kind of thing that, these incremental changes are, are not going to be a huge expense, but they're just a little bit, something a little bit different. The same goes with apparently some plumbing requirements. I haven't had, personally had a chance to delve into those. Next slide, please. From the, from the state requirements, our local amendments, again, are frankly, in my view, not a, not a big deal. We're making some basic clarifications in the codes, adopting some of the optional sections that evolve over time. There are unique types of construction, evolving types of construction that are being put in the codes as an appendix that are optional for cities to adopt. We're adopting those so that we can use those as these unique types of construction might come along. Tiny homes are an example of that. These codes evolve a little bit over time, so we're correcting and updating definitions and cross-references and so forth. We're not taking anything out that we have already put in. And I think most important in the fire safety world, we're not taking out some of the things that we've, we've put in the past about smoke alarms and self-closing doors and so forth that are really important. At this point, I think I'd like to turn it over to Chief Boydo to talk a little bit about the wildland urban interface, which is an area of code changes that is in the works, and probably maybe the most significant, I think, for the, the public safety in the, in the state. Chief?
Thanks, Jeff. So we're probably starting to learn a little bit from the different major fires that have happened across state over the past few decades. So we're, something that we've used for the lingo is a wildland interface, or woo-wee in our world. Right now, the state has gone through, and they're looking at all the fire severity throughout this, all the different regions. So the different ranger units for each, for CAL FIRE statewide. They're figuring out, based on an algorithm, looks at everything from the 10 to 50-year fire activity. They're looking at 2-kilometer zones to see what the vegetation growth is, the effects of vegetation death from, like beetle death and, and the drought, effects of drought. And they're using that with computer modeling to figure out how bad things could be. Right now, we're in the public comment for the State Responsibility Area, or SRA for short. The City of Albany does not have any State Responsibility Area. Our next piece is going to be the Local Responsibility Area, or LRA. Specifically in Albany, the areas that have been designated as moderate in the past, 2007 was the last time this was done, is the, as you would have guessed, the Albany Hill area. And then also the vegetation that's in between 80, 80, 580, and Golden Gate Fields along there, out along the waterfront into the bowl. So we're waiting to see whether, what's going to happen with the Local Responsibility Area. That could have some ramifications depending on the severity of it. If it's very high or high, there's some, there's some automatic triggers that happen where certain codes have to be followed. We, we were moderate before. I don't know if there's going to be any changes, but we'll soon learn that. So that's kind of the glimpse into what could become to Albany and the possible effects.
That's it for our presentation. I'm sure we both would be happy to answer any questions from council. Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation, and I appreciate the props. Any questions from council?
Yes, thank you for informing us about the local responsibility areas and the, the structure that the, the state imposes from there. Do you know when Albany will find out at least the draft and/or the final decision on those?
The draft maps, they're just finishing up the public comment on the state maps that should be ending mid-February. We're told somewhere around April and May, we'll get our maps sent out to us for our comment as well. There has been some interesting comments statewide from different members of League of Cities. They want to make sure that because of the new triggers that happen in the high and very high severity zones, the effects of how that's going to be for residents of those cities. So they're asking for more time for the public comment, the League of Cities specifically on this topic. So there'll be more to come. Luckily, we have a small area. We've done a very good job cross-departmentally with doing vegetation management, prepping, and all of those pieces. But we'll, we'll know more in, in April or May about what, what our level is.
Thanks, yeah. I'm very grateful for the job that all the departments and staff did that was stress-tested last summer, unfortunately, but I think the staff showed the, the work, the proactive work. The, I think I caught, and I may have misunderstood, that once the one of these zones is designated, it affects within 2 kilometers generally, or?
That was part of the, kind of the modeling that they used. They look at sizes of land.
Okay.
For parts of the state. Each state there is, is divided up into a different ranger unit, is what they used to be called. So there's one for each county, essentially. So they look at the 58 different counties and ranger units, look at all of those different factors within those little plots, and they do a percentage to put into their algorithm, and then they come up with the map. The map's available on the Office of the State Fire Marshal's website. And it's, it's, and there's also GIS data that you can download and into your own programs and all this, those sort of things. But it's a very interactive and, and to, it's easy to figure out what's going on. A lot of great information in there.
Does the local responsibility area have a nexus with what's required of buildings within a certain distance, depending upon the designation?
Yes.
And do you know what that distance is offhand, which I don't expect you would, but?
There's a process right now of where they are deciding that, that piece. On the most extreme end of things, it was 50, no, 150 feet total. Within 10 feet, they didn't want anything next to the house within 10 feet that was above the gutter line, I believe. They wanted things low, well-watered. They have certain vegetation lists that you can find in different fire safe councils as examples of what to plant around your house. And then things like 3- to 5-foot rock landscape or solid landscape, because it's really the embers and such. So decreasing the ability for the ember cast to hit the structure and stay on the structure and create heat, and then bigger fires out of that, and homes and buildings being destroyed from there. So, so the main, the main thing is vegetation clearance. Also, the exterior buildings have to be a certain type, triple-pane windows, roof, certain roofer materials, a certain clearance of the mesh that is part of the ventilation in the eaves and under the house. So it really gets very specific once you hit that very high severity level. So there could be some impacts along with that piece. Additionally, they've added for these types of areas, a required inspection of a property before it can be sold. So, so there's all these different new pieces that are happening. So that was an impact on the realty end of things as well.
Okay. I think I'm gathering from what you said when I asked the question, it was, I was asking, do they, I had in mind that the, only the open space, the wildland, was the LRA, and then maybe there was some distance from that boundary where different building requirements. But I have a feeling from the way you're describing it, the LRA includes built areas or already existing built areas.
The LRA is Local Responsibility Area.
Right.
So the area responsible, or that we're responsible is the City of Albany.
Right.
Albany Fire Department. So all of the land within our city limits, unless it's like UC Village property that's owned by the UC or the USDA building, which is federal property, technically. But, but we still respond there.
Okay, yeah, I guess what I'm, yeah, I'm going to take this up outside of the meeting. But, so if there's a designation of a high-hazard area that's in the LRA, it's not going to be the whole city, it's going to be some portion of the city.
Yeah, not the whole city, correct. It is specific to certain areas. So for us, everything from, I believe it is Washington North and, I think it was Madison West and down parts at the very end of the block against, adjacent to the hill.
Okay, yeah.
Very general piece. But you can see it on the maps that are available.
Okay.
Website.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, that's what I was looking for. Thanks.
Any from Vice Mayor Mickey? Any member of the public who would wish to comment? Now is the time.
Just a quick question. Do the changes to the state building codes regarding electrical and plumbing requirements, are these applied to facilities that have already been built, or would those ones only be held to previous requirements?
Thank you for your comment. Can we also put the clock back to three minutes? And are there any? And are there any commenters online? No online comments. Staff wants to answer that question?
I'd be happy to. Thank you for the question. It does not apply to, to an existing building as long as there isn't work going on in that building. So to use a hypothetical example, if you bought, if you own a house that was built in 1930 in Albany and nothing has ever been done to that house, legally, it only has to be kept up to 1930 building code standards. And there are a few of those houses, by the way. But if you were to remodel your kitchen or remodel a bathroom, then the plumbing and electrical and other requirements that apply today would be required for anything that's essentially anything that's being touched. You don't get to rebuild at 1930 levels or whatever the year happened to be.
Thank you, and I can confirm that from personal experience, as my parents' home was from before 1930, and we now have surge protectors in the remodeled kitchen. So this is already coming into effect. With that, we turn to council deliberation. Is there any comments from anyone on council? Nope. Yes, from our acting city attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just like to comment that I'd recommend that council set a public hearing for February 21st for the second reading of the ordinance in order to comply with notice requirements under state law.
Sorry, what date was that that you suggested?
That would be February 21st, which is the second meeting next month.
Thank you for that. Now, is there any deliberation from anyone on council? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion.
I will move first, first reading of ordinance 2023-01 with the second public hearing regarding this ordinance to occur on February 21st.
Can I clarify that you're waving first reading?
Thank you, yes, waving first reading. Yes, approving the ordinance and waving first reading.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. City Clerk, can we please call the roll? Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Councilmember Lopez? Councilmember Lopez Votier? Vice Mayor Mickey?
Yes.
Mayor Teedman?
Yes.
Councilmember Hanson Romero?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. That brings us to our item of unfinished business, a selection of a consultant to perform a racial equity survey. I believe we will have a report from the ad hoc committee of councilmembers Jordan and Lopez. Because Councilmember Lopez is unable to talk at the moment, I will read his comments that he has sent to me beforehand. So there, his voice will be heard, it'll be through me. Councilmember Jordan?
Max, why don't you go ahead and, if you'll read the comment from?
Sure.
Councilmember Lopez, start with, thanks.
So these are the words of Councilmember Lopez. "Councilmember Jordan and I made just efforts to independently rank prior to having discussions on the organizations assessed. Our recommendations are in line with supporting the Racial Equity Impact Plan, as highlighted in the memo provided in tonight's agenda. Each organization is talented and experienced in their own right. We applaud each of them for rising to the challenge to serve our community. However, the two we agreed to put forth for recommendation likely have the best capacity to serve our city and respective community members most effectively."
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Lopez. Maybe just a few details, because I'm always the detail guy, for, I think it's all laid out in the memo, but for people who are maybe listening and didn't wade through the memo, there were six consultancies that responded to the request for qualifications that was put out. Five different individuals rated those, each of those responses. There were three members of the Social Economic Justice Commission that did so as a part of an ad hoc committee for the purpose. Then the ad hoc committee of the council you just heard about. And each of those individuals rated each of those responses based on six factors that were described in the request for qualifications, each factor having a different weight. And all raters did it independently and then essentially came together in various ways to discuss the results and make adjustments and figure out how to move forward from there. So with that, given Councilmember Lopez's situation, I'm happy to answer questions the best I can, and hopefully he'll thumbs up, thumbs down, if I get it right or wrong.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council members? Seeing none, we will go to public comment. If you would like to comment, please raise your hand, and you'll be recognized for three minutes.
Good evening, City Council. This is Jeremiah Garrett Pinguello, Social Economic Justice Commissioner. Yeah, it's great that City Council is finally moving forward on this. I know myself, I was on that ad hoc committee to do research to select a few of those. Just to let you know, there was, it was a lot of work to select those. I know I personally spent in between 15 to 20 hours researching all those. Our ad hoc committee met numerous times to, to figure that out. So I just want to thank you all for, you know, moving forward on this. It's very, very good for our city. And, you know, I hope the, the ones you select, they do a really great job, and they bring forth a lot of, you know, help to the city in references to, you know, making policies or interacting with the public. So just reminding City Council how much work was involved into selecting those. We made very mindful decisions. So thank you very much for considering this. Appreciate it. Keep up the good work.
Thank you for your comment. Are there any other comments online? No other comments. Okay, we will bring it back to council discussion. Is there any comment by anyone on council?
Yeah, I will comment, and I appreciate Social Economic Justice Commissioner Garrett Pinguello commenting and doing that work. And I should have recognized you and recognized the other ad hoc committee members of the commission, who are Commissioner Linze and Commissioner Zapata. And I thank you all and agree that, yes, it was quite a bit of work, as you can imagine, rating six, six different proposals on five factors. You got 30 things you have to decide upon, and that's just the start of it. But I was grateful to have the opportunity to do the work.
Thank you. And I'll say my appreciation for both the members of the council who undertook this effort, leave it to our two scientists to essentially design a double-blind experiment so they don't know what the other's doing before they rate them. Very thorough, we appreciate it. Is there any further discussion? If not, I will entertain a motion and a second.
I will move the recommendation in the report, which, just to clarify again for the public who might not have read it, which was to declare the justice collective. Do I have that right? Okay. And see collaborative, thank you. I tend to get those mixed up as finalists, both, so we're not actually selecting consultants as each contract with tonight, rather designating those two respondents as finalists for the purpose of then going forward and collecting additional information as laid out in the report, both from their references and directly from them. And that to be done in collaboration between the ad hoc committee and staff, unless the council wants to change the ad hoc committee to other members.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Clerk, can we please have a roll? Vice Mayor Mickey?
Yes.
Mayor Teedman? Councilmember Hanson Romero?
Yes.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Councilmember Lopez? Councilmember Lopez Votier? Motion carries. Thank you. This brings us to our new business and item 11-1, which is city council appointments to the Board of Police and Fire Pension Fund Commissioners. Can we please have staff report?
Thank you, Mayor. The item before you is the appointment of alternates to the Board of Police and Fire Pension Fund. These alternates, per our city charter, section 9.01, may serve for a period of up to one year unless, again, appointed. At this time, staff is recommending that the council select a council member to serve as Mayor Teedman's alternate and reappoint the other alternates, same as previous year, as recommended. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council? I will ask one. Can we remind any of the council members who might want to be the alternate what the schedule is for these meetings? Which I see you have preempted me by starting to pull it up.
They're quarterly, the fourth Tuesday at 3:00 PM. These are in-person meetings, and they will be January, April, July, and October.
Excellent, thank you. Are there any further questions from council?
I see that there's more than one proposed alternate for the Police Department and Fire Department positions. Is that, is the council to select one, or is it okay to appoint multiple?
Ideally, you would retain as written. It's because of the different operation shifts, and the staff are here for different shifts depending on when the meeting falls.
Oh, yeah, that. Thank you.
Yes, we do not have 12-hour shifts on councils, or 24-hour shifts, I think, in that case. Seeing no other questions, we will take it to public comment. Are there any members of the public wishing to speak? No public comment. Seeing none, I'll bring it back to council and ask if there are any volunteers who would like to be an alternate for this body. Seeing none, I will suggest one if need be. That was a tentative hand, but I do appreciate it from Vice Mayor Mickey. Is there any further discussion on this item? If not, I will move that we appoint Vice Mayor Mickey as the alternate for the Board of the Police and Fire Pension Fund.
Since it's a nomination, I don't know if a second is needed by parliamentary procedure, but I will certainly second just in case.
It has been moved and seconded. Can we please have a vote? Councilmember Lopez? Councilmember Lopez Votier? Vice Mayor Mickey?
Yes.
Mayor Teedman?
Yes.
Councilmember Hanson Romero?
Yes.
And Councilmember Jordan?
With thanks to the Vice Mayor, yes.
Motion carries. With much thanks to the Vice Mayor. Appreciate your sacrifice of your time. That brings us to item 11-2, a policy requiring nominations by the Board of Education to city council advisory bodies to be students or representatives directly affiliated with the school district. And I believe we will have a report from Councilmember Jordan.
Thank you, yes. This is an item carrying over from the previous council. So it was a thought that was expressed and sounded like it was supported by, I don't know how many, because we didn't vote, but had support, which was to basically require that the nominees by the Board of Education have some nexus actually with the schools, because that's a valuable perspective to bring to those bodies that have seats for those nominees, particularly given the importance of schools to Albany culture, the presence of schools throughout the city. And so working from this, I came to the perspective in the report I offered, the council had the first priority, or if there's one seat on a body, that seat should be retained for a student slash youth member. And there are more than just the Albany Unified School District schools in the city, so this wasn't to be constrained to ASUD students, but any students through the city. The nomination would be by the USD Board of Education, but just to clarify on that. And the purpose of, of essentially designating the first seat, which may be the only seat, some of the bodies have two seats, for a student-youth member is to really push broader generational perspective to be expressed and available and go into decision-making by these bodies than would otherwise occur. And currently, according to the US Census Bureau, a quarter of Albany's population is, is under the age of 18 years. So it's a, you know, very large part of our population here. And then for those bodies where there's a second seat, to require that it be an adult who have some relationship with schools, could either be a staff member, could be a parent or guardian of a student. Since I wrote the, the report, it occurred to me, well, there are other adults who, who engage with youth in the city that are not in either of those categories. And there's coaches of the various non-school leagues, like Albany-Berkley Soccer League, Little League. And so that potentially could be an adjustment or an addition to what I wrote before, was to include eligibility for those adults. Following my submittal, the city manager kindly thought to reach out to the superintendent of ASUD, which I appreciate, and he requested that ASUD have the opportunity to partner with the city in the development of the policy that would be brought back to this body, should this body decide to direct development of a draft policy. I am certainly amenable to that, to a best practice. I apologize, I didn't follow it myself, so thanks again to the city manager for backfilling that on my part. And, yeah, so the, the recommendation is if the city council is interested in having a draft policy brought forward for its consideration with these ideas, to go ahead and move as much and to designate which council member or council members will work on drafting that policy with staff. Obviously, city staff, and then also with, in consultation with ASUD.
Thank you. Are there any questions from any council members?
I just have, yeah, I have a little bit of a question. Rather than, I, I love engaging the youth and love having this opportunity. I was, growing up through the school district, I always would like to see that, you know, I ran for school board even when I was fresh out of high school. So this was one of the things that I am very encouraged to do so. I think the YMCA Youth Government Program has done a really great job in our community as well. And I'd just like to change maybe something, rather than the word required, volunteered, and also understanding that, you know, some of these students may only be with us for a year at a time. It takes a while to get them up and running, so just to work on that further with the Board of Education, ASUD, and, and staff's recommendations moving forward.
Whoops, I went the other way now. The city manager reminded me when I was developing the report that there is one seat on, currently within the advisory body structure that is designated for a student, which is on the Climate Action Committee. And for that seat, the, the timing is appointment at the end of the school year, essentially with the term extending another year, and with an expression of desire that it be a sophomore who is appointed and then a viewer for a two-year term, so they have that opportunity to, to learn, to have that go through that learning curve that you mentioned. So if that's, sounds reasonable, and we potentially could talk outside the meeting to get more of your ideas, maybe you could even be on an ad hoc committee to work on this, since you've raised your hand. That might be something that could be applied to the other seats as well.
Any further questions? Seeing none, we'll take it to public comment.
Good evening. This is Jeremiah, a school board appointee to the Social Economic Justice Commission for the past two years. You know, Mayor Jordan, I just don't see how, you know, talking to Jennifer after taking a vote tonight, outside of the meeting, is going to do anything. I mean, you're trying to take a vote tonight. So I don't, I don't know what that side talk, ad hoc committee is kind of all about. But I'm looking at a calendar here, and, you know, Social Economic Justice Commission doesn't meet in January this month. And, you know, school gets out in June, starts back up in late August, September. So I'm counting the months that actually a student would actually be on, serve on the committee or commission, which might be February, March, April, May. Graduation's June. June, so, you know, I'm not sure about that. So maybe there's four months there, and then it's summertime. So the student may not attend these meetings here in the summer. And then October, November, December, Social Economic Justice meets the first Tuesday of the month, so they may not even be back from Thanksgiving break. So you're looking at a total of maybe six months out of the year, you might have a student even participating in these commissions. I mean, common sense says that the student may not be available. That reduces the chances of even making quorum. And the second commission is the Policing Commission. So you're requiring the school district to have a student be on the Policing Commission? I just don't think this is a very good decision to require the school board to do this. I mean, I know myself, I've been serving on the Social Justice Commission for the past two years. I'm a former graduate of Albany High School. I went through the Albany School District pretty much my whole life, graduated in 2001. I was in leadership class. I was the quarterback for the football team. I wrestled, I played baseball for all four years. I was a student athlete with an overall GPA of 3.73. I mean, you're just limiting it to required by people affiliated with the school district, such as being a parent or guardian, or a student, doesn't always serve the best interest of the community. I just really appreciate that I'm able to do this. I just don't think it's the smartest idea, because a student is only available about six months out of the year to even attend these commission meetings. So it's... If you're trying to make a smart decision, why would you intend to make a decision like this, knowing that a student will only attend six meetings out of the year? Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Are there any further public comment?
I am Kim Trutain, Albany resident, prior school board trustee, and current Albany Unified School District staff member. Albany Unified deeply appreciates the sentiment behind this requested item and agrees completely with the goal. We also want to provide these meaningful local leadership experiences for our students. Albany Unified students have a record of being responsible City of Albany Committee and Commission members. Global change begins locally, and we want to encourage participation in local government. We would like to work collaboratively with the City of Albany in this and in all issues affecting both district and city. We hope that by making a routine practice of working together, we can ensure transparency, partnership, and excellent communication. Superintendent Frank Wells has suggested that, as the communications lead for the district, I might be able to provide a connection with the city on this particular item. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Hi, my name is Brian Martin. I wanted to express my support for involving the local students on the commissions, as has been suggested and has already been done in the past. My older daughter was on the Climate Action Committee, and she found the experience invaluable, and I'd... She was able to attend, you know, pretty much every meeting. There's always, adults have busy schedules or away on business, make travel plans during the summers, too. But she was able to attend as many or more meetings than everybody else, so... And now she's majoring in engineering with a goal of environmental focus, and so she's really, it gave her a big help, and I like to think that she helped our community with her perspective as well. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Do we have any further?
No further comment.
Thank you. With that, we'll bring it back to council for deliberation. Are there any council members wishing to speak? Vice Mayor Mickey?
Thank you, Mayor. I really appreciate the work that was put into putting this together, Councilmember Jordan. I appreciate the thought that was put into it, and I appreciate the coordination with the school district. I did have one concern about nominating a student for a two-year term as a junior, serving two years. In one sense, that would limit the availability for a student to serve to be... Sorry, the number of openings would only happen every other, sorry, every two years. I guess we appoint in two years. I guess my thought there... Sorry, I'm going to back up. It's been a long day. I was wondering, is there a possibility, if the ad hoc committee could discuss with both staff and AUSD, whether or not there's the possibility of actually nominating two students at a time? Perhaps a junior, a sophomore and a junior, with the junior actually serving, and having the sophomore attend the meetings, participate in the meetings, but be a non-voting member, so that at the time when the junior either graduates and/or leaves Albany and a replacement is needed, we actually have a student who understands how the committee or commission is run and has the ability to step in kind of right of way. And so, I'm primarily looking at the two bodies that only have one seat that might be appointed as a student, so Arts Committee and Climate Action. Again, this is really just a recommendation for the ad hoc committee to discuss. I just wanted to make sure that I raised that concern about having one student on a body, and when that student leaves, having a new student come in and immediately have to start to learn how the committees and commissions work.
Thank you. Comment on that?
From my perspective, that's a great idea, I think, and very creative. So should the council want to move forward with this? And if I'm designated to be involved, I would certainly carry that idea forward.
That was also a way of me saying that I'd like to throw an idea out there, but not serve on the ad hoc committee.
Trying to dodge that, huh?
You already took one for the team, so I'm willing to take this one on, John.
Great, that was the next thing I was going to ask for, of whom I'd serve. I'll just say, before we get to any motions, thank you for bringing this forward. I think it is a good idea. And, you know, for the worries about students being able to serve as long, you know, I believe AUSD, their board actually has student representation on it, and they are functional, so there are students who are able to attend these important meetings. And I'm not super worried about being able to recruit, as it's much easier to distribute information when you have everybody in a classroom at set times and actually say, if you want to take this opportunity, please do. And I imagine there are a lot of people at Albany who would jump at the chance, judging from my experience. With that, do I have a motion?
All right, I will move the recommendation with the additional... Well, I'll move the recommendation with an ad hoc committee to consist of Councilmember Hanson Romero and myself, with the addition of potentially considering expanding the eligible pool of adults to include other adults outside of the school system that work with youth on a regular basis. And to also consider the suggestion made by Vice Mayor Mickey, which is to consider appointing both a rising junior and a rising senior, with the rising junior to be ex officio, which is fancy talk for non-voting, and the rising senior to have the voting seat. And for the ad hoc committee to work with city staff and in coordination with AUSD staff.
I'll second that. It's been moved and seconded. City Clerk, can we please have the roll?
Mayor Tiedman?
Yes.
Councilmember Hanson Romero?
Yes.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Councilmember Lopez? Councilmember Lopez-Vautier? And Vice Mayor Mickey?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And if I could just make a couple other comments I should have made before the vote, not about the vote specifically, but number one, I'm fascinated to learn that you, a little bit more about your history, that you ran for board. Look forward to maybe learning even more about that, when we're on the ad hoc committee, sidebar conversations. And in terms of the student representatives, or representatives, advisory body members who are students, well, probably won't be a surprise that I followed the Climate Action Committee closely for, pretty much since its inception, I think, in 2008, when it was the Sustainability Committee. I haven't anecdotally noticed a difference in attendance. Of course, I'm a data guy, so now I'm going to have to go map the attendance for the last 15 years and figure it out. That said, I can see anecdotally that one of the students in that time was appointed chair, because they were basically a leader on the body. And at the same time, there was a student appointed to the Arts Committee, which was not designated to students, but this student was appointed, and she was appointed chair by that body because she was such a leader. And each of them subsequently made presentations to the council on recommendations that those bodies put forward, and they were two of the best presentations I've seen made by chairs ever in my decades of following this body. So I'm very much looking forward to having more students potentially.
Thank you. I believe that brings us to Item 12, which is council subcommittee reports and reports on regional appointed bodies. I have Councilmember Lopez's that I'll read before I do my own, but before we do that, I'll go around the room. Councilmember Jordan?
Well, Councilmember Lopez and I attended a meeting, so I don't know if he wrote about this or not. This was with the... Okay. So we met with the Laboratory Director of the Mosquito Abatement District. He reached out. Is that in his notes, or?
Yes, but briefly, so if you want to add more detail, feel free.
Okay. Well, I don't want to steal his thunder, given that he can't thunder at the moment. Yeah, so this was Eric Haas Stapleton, and he reached out to me to meet, because he was going to be in the area visiting USDA, and he was interested in talking about this idea that I brought forward when I was Albany's representative on the body, which is to explore altering storm drain catch basins so that they self-drain after an event within a time period that would preclude mosquitoes from growing to adulthood. And that would eliminate both those as a potential source of those vectors, as well as eliminate the work that the district is currently doing to have to treat those basins, you know, regularly after storm events. And so I extended the invitation to Albany's now representative, Councilmember Lopez, and we both met with him, and we're developing a research program to pursue that. And I will leave it at that. I will say the Mosquito Abatement District is quite enthusiastic about the concept, and he said they'd be able to support an intern working on this, so.
Thank you. Councilmember Hanson Romero?
I attended the Stop Waste meeting, the Alameda County Waste Management. It was primarily on budget, their current budget, and they're doing very well. They're very organized. I'm very impressed. So, and they continue to work towards, you know, looking at the unfunded state mandates being their largest cost and considering that moving forward. So not much more to report there, other than the fact that they're very efficient, from what I can see, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's a pretty amazing agency and body, and gee, that sounds like a problem other jurisdictions have with the unfunded pension liability.
Vice Mayor Mickey?
I did not have any regional body meetings.
Okay. Then I will proceed to Councilmember Lopez's reports, to echo Councilmember Jordan. I attended the most recent Alameda County Mosquito Abatement District meeting on January 11th, working on familiarizing themselves with the body. And as Councilmember Jordan said, they met with the lab director to discuss catch basin studies and future developments that could potentially be applicable to the City of Albany. On EBC, they did attend the orientation as an alternative representative for the City of Albany, to meet other board members and understand the collective efforts for a public power agency. And on the Dean's Advisory Committee to the Giltract, there's no official report, but they are in communication with UC Berkeley's Office of the Chancellor to prepare for an upcoming meeting. Just me? I have a couple of... I attended the Alameda County Mayor's Conference this month, where we had a few things, though the most important one I've been preempted on, in that the League of Cities has various events, including training for new council people, which I believe all three of our new council members are planning to attend. There was also a presentation from the Alameda County Fair Foundation, which is building a farm on the fairgrounds to provide a destination for field trips. And will have animal pens and crops, and looks very wonderful and a nice, learning-focused area. Also note that at that meeting, the Mayor's Conference sought to appoint me to the Association of Bay Area Governments Executive Committee, which had a meeting the next day, which I then attended. That meeting was mainly to confirm appointments made by the President of ABAG, which is our neighboring city's mayor, Jesse Ergwin, to various committees for ABAG. I wasn't appointed to any of those, at least not yet. And that is all of my items. I believe that brings us to future agenda items. Are there any council members who would like to request?
Actually, if I could just comment on that real quick. Congratulations on being appointed.
Thank you.
And I think that goes to, we don't need a director like a mayor to get regional traction, which I know that issue comes up with some regularity, but here we go. Thanks.
Thank you. Are there any council members who would like to request an item for future agenda?
I think that would fall under councilperson Lopez and myself, and our ad hoc committee will be coming to council at the next meeting with our recommendations to move forward.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I'm interested in having an item regarding requiring event, bike parking appropriate to an event at encroachment permits as a matter of policy, so that it doesn't have to be remembered and brought up every time one of these permits comes. But that would be something I'd work with staff on, so that would depend on staff bandwidth, and I don't know when it'll come back.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Mickey?
No items for next councilman.
Thank you. And I don't see any from Councilmember Lopez. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this? They all have one minute.
Yeah, I also had a public comment on the last agenda item, but you never asked for public comment regarding the...
On item number 12?
Yeah.
Sure, if you'd like to make your comment for future agenda items now, and then I can come back and take public comment on that previous item, apologies for missing it.
Okay, that'll work. Thank you very much, Mayor Tiedman. Yeah, future agenda items, let's see. It would be great for city council to really consider looking into fentanyl awareness. I know my work with the school district for fentanyl awareness has benefited the school district in big ways. And so I think it would be great if the city council would, you know, take action and get fentanyl awareness and Narcan training to city staff. For recommendation, please? I think that's a great idea.
Thank you for your comment. We'll come back for a comment on item 12 in a second. Is there any more comment on future agenda items?
Hi there. Actually, I just want to mention, first of all, I did try to speak at the, on the Agenda Item About Move and Groove event, but I wasn't recognized, so here I am again. So the city manager and council members have mentioned the almost unprecedented, or unprecedented in our lifetime climate crisis we're experiencing, and motor vehicles are a major cause of greenhouse gas emissions. Albany Climate Action Plan requires that we do what we can to encourage safe alternatives to motor vehicle use, such as public transit, and... to motor vehicle use, such as public transit and active transportation. So yes, please, an event called Move and Groove, and any event which is geared toward health and fitness, and any event at all, especially one that's getting, that's being subsidized by the city, should encourage people to use transportation other than motor vehicles. So yes, please, put on the agenda that this event and other events provide bike parking that's visible and safe for our own health and the health of our planet. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe we have one more on this item.
Oops, hi, Nick Peterson, Albany resident. Hey, I noticed under the Housing Authority of Alameda County, you still have former councilmember McQuade. I'm just interested in knowing who, what current council member is assigned to that body, and it would be interesting to get a report on that. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. I can briefly answer that, that the council reaffirmed former Councilmember McQuade's appointment to that body, as it does not need to be a council member. And she, as the chair of that committee, it was viewed that she should continue in the role. I'll say just a last thing on future agenda items that I forgot to mention is, I appreciate everyone having so many appointments on this agenda item. I will counsel us all to keep making those appointments, so those bodies can get up and moving, and I know that I am guilty of not having made all my appointments, so I'm not attempting to tell anyone to do anything I don't need to remind myself to do, but I hope to see more of those appointments on future agenda items. With that, can we briefly go back to public comment on item number 12?
Thank you, Mayor Tiedman, I appreciate it. Yeah, so my public comment is basically the same about Peggy McQuade. I was wondering if anybody from the city council had actually invited her to attend this meeting to make a report with the Alameda County Housing Authority. I know housing is a top priority in Albany, and so I just want to make sure that she gets invited to, you know, every city council meeting, just that way she gets an email from city staff as a reminder to attend the meeting, to make a report if there is a report available. And I was wondering if, you know, there could be an alternate in case she's not available, because the reason why city council lets her do that is because she has experience and she has so much knowledge in the, in that meeting, but I think it'd be great if there was an alternate for somebody else to learn as well, in case she can't make a meeting or make a report, there's still an alternate to give the report, much-needed report for the Alameda County Housing Authority. So all in all, two things to take note, what I'm saying is, just please make sure to remind her, send her an email to invite her to make a report, and also, please consider creating an alternate for that meeting, so somebody else can learn much-needed information. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment, and I'll say that I do not believe that we can appoint an alternate for that position, as it is appointed by the Alameda County Board of Supervisors? Or, yes? So we can't appoint an alternate, but I will take it under advisement that, as much as I would love to force Peggy to come back to these meetings at the very end every time and to make her report, I will attempt to, as mayor, have her email me any updates she has, and I will read them out. That, I believe, brings us to the announcement of any city meetings and events, and ask everyone to govern themselves to look toward that list, and I believe that brings us to adjournment. Thank you, Vice Mayor, councilmembers, staff, particularly staff who are filling in, and also councilmembers who have joined us despite difficulties with traveling and illness. We very much appreciate it, and we are adjourned.